This conference will now be recorded.
It's five thirty, call please.
Here.
If you want to take the opening prayer and pledge allegiance, please stand.
Father, thank you for gathering. With them they need. And we also ask that you be with those that as we go home tonight, keep their safe. Jesus name.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, the flag of the United States of America, the religion of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there any additions, additions or relations to the agenda?
Mayor, we would like to remove consent item number three and then add an executive session section. And we would have an executive session to discuss with attorney this in the city's legal and financial relationship with Cali County Humane Society pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash forty through nineteen B two. A consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney client relationship. And so replace item with that. And then we also ask for a second executive session to discuss a matter involving a non-elected city employee pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one, which justifies the discussion of personnel matters of non-elected personnel, it's private matters.
Okay.
I'm here. I'm in the way, approved agenda as amended.
Second. Okay, leave a second, any other discussion on it? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Move.
Second. Discussion on that. If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Okay, consent agenda is, one, approve the November fifth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting minutes as written, two, a resolution approving a notice of budget hearing for the publication setting date for a public hearing five thirty on December third, two thousand twenty-four, to amend the two thousand twenty-four budget for the city of Arkansas City. And four is provide a formal letter of support from the city commission to assess Twin Weavers development supports in applying for a Kansas Department transportation operating funds for the fiscal two thousand twenty-six year. And that's something we do every year on that one, don't we?
Yes.
Did you check to see if Winfield was doing the same, if they do the same thing? Or is it just us?
I would assume they do. They would look for support throughout the county since they serve.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, now imagine on the number two, on that notice of budget hearing, you might just briefly say something about that.
Sure, it's just a housekeeping issue. We just have to amend any budget that, or any fund that might go over budget. So we'll be looking at the water fund this year. And that's for the east pressure zone engineering, which will later be wrapped into the form. And then some power membranes that were replaced and then twelve sixteen.
Sixteen.
And so this is just to set the public here.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody knew. Thank you. Okay, need a motion for a consent agenda?
So move.
Second. Okay, move second, any more discussion on it? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. New business, number one.
For the attorney department, item number one is an ordinance authorizing the operation of special use, special purpose vehicles, including golf carts, worksite utility, worksite vehicles, micro utility trucks, and all train vehicles on the streets within the corporate city limits of Arkansas City, Kansas, for running for related matters, including frustration and penalties for violation of, thus repealing, number twenty-three oh-three four-five seven-six.
I think before we get into that, mayor, I would advise that, speaking with chief, he was not able to review this before our Friday meeting and has done a comprehensive review of it. And I think he has some, some questions about some of the changes that were made that are substantial. So I think we may need to move this one meeting. I feel that strongly about what he's, I think he feels that strongly about it.
Table.
Table.
Well, I know some people in here are scared of.
I know.
Sure.
I read this after it come out Friday, Ken Harrow for Kansas City.
Right, right up here, Ken.
And I read this and I think what Mr. Holloway has and I, we agree on, and that's what comes to my attention. Because under section one says means golf cart, worksite, utility vehicle. And it comes down in section, just let me be correct here. Yeah, section two, it's allowing you to ride those carts without lights or any reflectors as long as between sunrise and sunset. I kind of had an issue with that myself. But then in the language here, when you drop down to section three, it says all of them have got to have the lights, reflectors, seatbelts. So I'm, and I spoke to Larry last week. So I'm okay with moving it to the next meeting because I think the language needs to be changed. I just wanted you to know that I've been involved in it and I feel.
Thank you, Ken.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion when we move this item number one to our next meeting. So they'll have time to make the adjustments on it and have more discussion on it, I guess.
Second.
Okay, two seconds to die.
Give it to back, give it to Mr. Stillman.
Okay. Any more discussion on it? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, so we'll bring it up for next meeting.
There's, there's, yeah. Work in progress, thing you said.
Yeah, it is work in progress, I mean.
Until we get it, until we get it passed.
We need to get it right. And chief, you know, I'm glad you brought up some of the concerns you had in it. So we're all, we're trying to work together. City manager department.
Item number one, a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into an agreement with the state preservation officer to conduct historic views. Two-four E as amended.
So mayor commission, I discussed with you on Friday what, what this is about. But just to quickly reiterate, this agreement allows the historic preservation board to conduct state law level reviews instead of having the state do it. We've done this for the last ten years. It's worked out really well. And the state historic preservation office still agrees that we're doing what we need to do. We're still, we're eligible to renew for another year. So that's what this agreement will do, this continues that.
So it stays home, in other words, we don't, they don't make our decision to pick it. We can make ours down here, you know, with our, you know, through the city commission and so forth.
Technically, they are considered an agreed party, so they could appeal. They could ask for an appeal for something just like anybody else could. So that's out there, they don't do that really. They could, they thought we did something inappropriate.
I think it's great to heaven, you know. You know, so.
Historic board members, do any continuing education?
We attempt to, sometimes we honestly don't. Yes, that's, that's actually supposed to be something that we.
Okay, so doing. Yeah, and this happens every, what, five year or ten years?
This agreement's every fivers.
Well, that being said, I'll make a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter an agreement with the state historical preservation office officer to conduct historical, history reviews under the KSA seventy-five days two-seven, two-four E as amended.
Okay.
It's been moved, second, any other discussion on it? If not, it's a voice vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Item number two is a resolution authorizing a change order submitted by Science Solutions to cover shipping with Arkansas City entrance welcome sign project for the amount not to exceed one thousand.
So as we continue moving forward with our entrance signs that were approved earlier, this cost would cover the shipping and handling to send the letters that will be installing up on the West Madison Bridge coming from Iowa. So once we are able to approve this, hopefully, then we can start the shipping process and then we'll install as soon as possible, so.
And they didn't spell out that there was shipping involved when they put in the, their proposal, right?
The original. It's unfortunate.
Make a motion that we approve the resolution authorizing a change order submitted by Science Solutions to cover shipping expenses for the Arkansas City entrance welcome signs project for an amount not to exceed one thousand fifty dollars.
Second. That's Charlie. Any other discussion on it? Okay, if not, it's a voice vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
And then number three is a resolution approving the city of Arkansas City financing of public improvement policy.
So we're all aware, we had purchased some property this past year for housing development. So this is another step in facilitating development of that property or any other property in the city where there's going to be infrastructure needs, whether it be water lines, streets, those types of things. So this policy just really establishes a structure for that. And he's responsible to install the streets and utilities and, and also some financial guarantees for two letters of credit and how that all plays out and, and as, how much is required based on the size of the project and what's going on and when those are released. And so it just really lays out the structure on the development of the public infrastructure needed to support development. This would be commercial or residential.
Do you think this policy will hinder any developers from coming in?
No, we work with Lance at PEC. We work with a lot of developers throughout the, this, our state. And they're all used to that. All the cities have some type of development policy. And so ours isn't any, any more stringent nor relaxed than others. I think we have a good policy. Worked through with Josh, worked with us as well on that. So I don't know if you have any comments on it, but.
And this actually, I mean, with Friday, you know, when we were discussing, it actually makes it more fair for, you know, across the board. Not that life's got to be fair, but people like.
Right, there's a consistent policy that we, when we're working with developers that we have in place and based on the type of project they're working on, the size of it. So it'll, yeah, it'll, it protects our, our citizens, the taxpayers, and it protects the developers as well, so.
I got a part of it to get out, just.
Well, we've never had a policy before, so, I mean, you know, we just been kind of shooting our hip pockets, you know, type of thing. I mean, now we've got clarity, you know, both parties and stuff, and that's, that'll go a long ways.
Well, I would, so we get over those, a resolution approving the city of Arkansas City financing a public improvements.
Second. Okay, it's been moved, second, no discussion on it? If not, it's a voice vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Before.
A resolution approving the city of Arkansas City reinvestment housing incentive district for each area.
So again, to facilitate development, one of the tools that the state has available is a reinvestment housing incentive district in RHID. And so this policy would basically put structure on how we administer that if a developer wanted to use that. The RHID tool allows the developer to catch, capture the incremental increase in valuation of, of a property before development and after. And that, and that incremental increase to be used to pay for infrastructure, such as the streets, the utilities, dirt work, things like that. On green, on green space like this, it wouldn't be able, use, wouldn't be allowed to be used on the structures itself, just the infrastructure needed to facilitate the development.
That's like a twenty-five year?
Yes. With, with the RHID, there, there is a allowed cost that they can capture and a maximum amount of twenty-five years. So just say two hundred thousand dollars in allowable costs that they can be reimbursed from the incremental tax increase. That RHID would pay, would rebate back those taxes until they hit the two hundred thousand or twenty-five years, whichever came first. So they could, it just wouldn't be a forever tax rebate. There would be budget amounts of allowable costs that they're allowed to recapture. And then after that, it goes off. Or they can hit the full twenty-five years if they don't capture it, so.
It's four things in the toolbox for us to, you know, be able to, you know, do for, for developers and stuff. It's just, the whole thing, the one we just got through approving on this one here, it's just making people friendly, I mean, to developers coming in, you know. Ten years ago, we had a bad vibe, you know, nobody wanted to come in because we just didn't, you know, we didn't treat them right, you know. Policy or whatever. Now, you know, we're open thing, except I think we're going to see a lot of developers look at this area in a way, you know, and hopefully, you know, want to do some business with us. We're trying to be people friendly.
When, when we pass these resolutions, do we forward them on to Cali first? So she knows how to market.
Yeah, we definitely.
Policies to investors who knows. And do our real estate agents get copies that they could use?
We can share it with them. I mean, you know, really, this is more for developers. Yeah, not really how, so if there's already a lot has, you know.
Yeah, everybody has streets, utilities, this really doesn't apply there.
This is, you know, the realtors could have some properties they want to sell developing too.
We can definitely share that with the, with the developers group and let them know about it.
Be a good idea. Mayor, I move for your approval, a resolution for the city of Arkansas City reinvestment housing incentive district policy.
Second. Okay, it's been moved, second, any other discussion on it? If not, it's a voice vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. City manager update.
Right. So in front of you, there is a suit bowls and cinnamon rolls that will be on number twenty-first from eleven to one at the Ag Building. Do you have anything you want to?
We need some judges, so if you guys are available. It's a very strict competition of employees or chili, so a lot of them are very proud. If you want to be a judge, come on down at eleven, have some. Enjoy. When is it? Eleven to.
Thursday. Thursday, this, this.
What's it called? What'd you call it?
Oh, it's a, it's a cinnamon roll. Suit bowl, cinnamon roll, that's an employee. Just reminder, city hall will be closed on Thanksgiving Day, twenty-eighth, and then Friday after twenty-ninth. Then on November, November thirtieth is that Christmas in the city. I think it starts at eleven AM, Christmas tree lighting is at six-thirty. And there'll be all kinds of stuff going on in between, so.
And the lighting is.
Six.
And what is that?
The parade starts right after that. I think a quarter till six is when they're going to light and the parade starts at six unless they made a change. That's the last I know.
Oh, I was just looking at the flyer you guys sent on it, so.
Okay, they may have made a change and I could be wrong, but originally it was that.
Okay. So yeah, give it Jill, she'll give the details. So I provided an email, so on the LED light rate case that we had worked on last year, provided our utility bill, our electric bills to Wilson Zeke the other day. They ran some numbers on it. And so they estimate that with, with the reduction in electric rates that we were able to achieve in the, in that rate case, that we, we're going to save about eighteen thousand a year on lighting costs for the city. And so that'll, there, there may be an opportunity to revisit that here in the future and I'll keep you posted on that. But our estimated fee to, for that is going to be about three thousand six hundred dollars. And then that, that eighteen, nineteen thousand dollar savings will continue on until the next rate case.
So what's it there, five years?
It just depends on what's going on, if they need funds. Like, they're getting ready to open up the rate case again because they've ever just proposed to do the two new power plants. And so they're, they're going to look at their rates again to accommodate that. So again, those things kind of all play together when they do things, so. But I just kind of wanted to give you an update on that.
They will continue to replace our off color balls.
Soon, I'd say. Black though, but.
Well, anybody get a mayor, yes, that's a, that's a bonus.
Then we've identified a couple of properties for the east pressures and water towers. So we're, we're working, we're reaching out to them on that. I've, I've heard back from one property owner that is interested, so we, at this point, we have one property owner that would be interested in letting us put a tower up on, on the property. We have to buy it, of course. Yeah, I haven't heard back from the other one yet, but, so we're working through that. We had a meeting, and I'm glad Rod's here, he might want to provide a little more. We had a meeting with KDHE today on chlorides. So with, when we treat water at the water treatment plant, we have the reverse osmosis system and we get waste and then that waste goes to the water treatment plant for disposal. And the chlorides have been high on that recently. Rod, do you want to get into any of that or just me keep it at a real high level?
Yeah. Pretty well concentrated off the RO as well as all of it. You know, we're trying to delay it with the flood off waste water. And we've been out of compliance on some of that. So we're looking at what we might need to do and work with KDHE to resolve that problem. Then also got a little worried that this could interrupt our, our, you didn't say our project. It's, you know, what we picked up today, we don't think it's anything to do with that.
Well, Rod, what you think, I was talking to Randy before the meeting, it could be the drought, you know, those rivers been down so low, you know, and stuff and, you know. And I know up around Oxford, you know, they've had a lot of saltwater wells up there, you know, that's leaked into the system, you know, over the years. You know, they had a little salt, you know, because Winfield tried to drill some water wells up there and they couldn't just do solely, you know, so.
Yeah, we have to look into all of that.
A lot of that's just migration coming our way, space with low water, you know.
Probably be bringing an agreement with Burns and Mack to you guys here in upcoming meetings because they're going to be doing a lot of, Rodney's, his folks take a lot of, keep a lot of records on things that are going on. And so they'll be able to take that data that Rodney and keep and try to pinpoint what might be going on and where these, where this may be coming from, so. But we'll use Burns and Mack to help navigate that, put those, the, those numbers together and, and respond to.
You know, it's amazing, you cross the state line, they only worry about that, you know. I mean, it's just amazing.
We're all going to remove that Oklahoma?
Well, I think too, you know, with the new administration coming in, I'll just talk it out loud. EPA and stuff like that could loosen things up a little bit because they've been too strict on us here the last several years. So hopefully that, maybe they'll get some relief, I don't know, I'm just talking out loud, so. Go ahead, Randy, I'm sorry.
That's fine. So that pretty well covers that for now.
We were, we, the main thing we worried about first, that this would, could interrupt our.
What about our water tower? Randy, are we getting pretty well done on the end?
It went years then.
Completed. Go ahead.
Yeah, it went back online last Thursday.
And the tower is full and everything's happy. That's good.
I talked to Liz Motel and Power and the water pressure is up. Water pressure is up, she said something's too up, but that's good. She's on the board, but she's happy.
But she, but she said that cost her about a hundred thousand dollars from that one, yeah?
It was a lot. Having to reimburse people and.
Lost reservations.
But we'll keep you updated on the, on the chloride situation and as we learn more about it. And it's easily solved. On the cyber data, the servers are all back up and running. I think we're pretty much all back on with this, except for the remote stuff's not there yet. The investigation is pretty well wound up. And it doesn't appear that there was any sensitive information, well, there wasn't any sensitive information obtained or. There, we're waiting on the, the final report from them. And then, once we kind of have the final clearing from the attorneys and stuff on all that, we can, I think we'll be ready to get remote access back up and going. Anything there that I'm not right on?
No. We're all waiting on it and Matt to work out something with the church.
Can I ask a question? On the water plant down there, I was told that the internet was not available because of this type of thing. Is that permanent or is that temporary or?
Once, we, once we're cleared from, from all the investigations that we, we don't have any more potential threat there, then we'll get that back up and going with the.
Probably if somebody could use a hotspot and have a presentation.
Right.
But that would be, because I've had people ask what's available, so.
We've just, our, the internet service we have there, we've completely shut off.
Okay, I didn't know if that was a permanent decision or temporary, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be up, we'll have that back up and going again. There'll be some additional security things in place, but we just had to make sure there wasn't anything there.
I just want to respond appropriately, if people want to rent the room or use the room. Thank you.
Got you. And then I did, and I'll let Nick get into some more details on this here real quick. And he has some updates too on projects. But, you know, with the safe streets for all.
Grant we were worth forty, forty dollars.
And Nick will get into the details on that. And our match funds will come from the Build Kansas Fund, which we're funding on that here prior to this, so. I'll let Nick kind of dig into what that's all about, so if you want to.
So the grant was twofold, total thousand for the, the grant that we applied for. Huge success because that's going to allow us to get a comprehensive traffic study so we can start focusing on where certain areas of town that were having identity of accidents and issues there with vehicles, pedestrians, bicycles. So it's really going to dive deep. We did one a few years ago near the middle school, shed some light on how we can continue provide safety. So this traffic study, we're also focused on fifteenth radio skyline, really looking around the high school area.
Run that hundred-one acreage.
Yeah. So we're really going to just prepare for the future as much as possible so we can have as many answers if we start looking at infrastructure as far as road safety. We'll be prepared as much as possible. So we're excited for this. So this first grant, which would have been a city share, that was sixty thousand dollars. So this entire three hundred thousand dollar grant, great news, we don't have to pay a single dollar, so. It's exciting. You okay if I?
Get the projects.
Okay. Just updates on the projects, the street condition assessment's ninety-nine percent complete. So excited for that. All the roads have been catalogued, everything's up on the trans parent that they have up on the website so we can view all the roads. We can have a comprehensive five-year outlook of where we're going to be looking to mill and overlay, continue to be proactive rather than reactive with our streets. So we're really excited about that. Ark City entrance signs, two of the locations, the groundwork. Silverdale signs, stones, excuse me, that we are still on track about end of January. We're looking mid-January to have them installed. So we're excited for, for that curb to go up. And then this morning, Chief Cast Blum and I, we met at the fire station to meet with a contractor to look at rehabbing the entire fire station. A lot of great news came out of that. This contractor, they specifically, their bread and butter is fire stations. There's a lot more to it than just building a bank or cafeteria. Very complex, there's a lot of different areas, so. So we're excited for this. We got really great news as far as the timeline for the potential rehab could take, what they're projecting, anywhere from eight months to a year. We're looking at a year and a half to two years, so we're excited, but it's construction, you never know. You almost have to prepare for the worst.
And that, the study we did, you know, we thought we had a void underneath that thing and it came in, it wasn't. So, but they found two other metal problems, what was that? Do you remember what that was?
Yeah, so before we even get into that though, what we want to do is rip into the concrete and start pulling out some of the plumbing.
Okay.
Because that's going to be, you know, obviously concerns with a few other trades that we have within the building. So we'll focus on that and put everything back. We'll look to level a lot of the fire station because as far as the ground, it's, it has many different. many different, how would you say, elevations. So, we're going to try to make it a little safer as far as up and down, so. And then just kind of a recap of, of our infrastructure that we've been approved for twenty twenty-four that we found out, the hike and bike trail, which is fantastic. We cannot wait for that to start in twenty-five. F Street Bridge replacement and then the C clip from Madison, H Street to the bridge. And then last will be the remodel that we have of as far as the commission room of just audio and visual. So, we'll look to address all those issues. We'll start tomorrow. So, next time you're in here, the audience will be able to hear everyone and then everyone will be able to see as far as up on the TVs what they're looking at and videos and pictures will be a lot easier rather than these gentlemen here turning their heads and hurting their necks and turning off the lights. So, it'll be a lot easier to see and hear moving forward at our next commissioner meeting.
Is there an approximate start date on the hike bike trail?
I have not heard anything. There's been a contractor selected, but we have not heard.
The, there's a, May to June is the start date. Early start date would be May. Late start June, so, but we don't have a tight date yet.
Thank you, Nick. Any discussion by the commissioners? Anybody got anything to say? Any comments from the audience?
This is kind of just an update for people. I don't know if any of you guys have come to maybe have these before. I have temporarily suspended operations at the Northwest Community Center on Fridays solely because I figured out that doing all this by myself is not the easiest thing to do. But this document kind of highlights to all four of what you would consider the tax using entities, of which you are the third that I have come to. Last night I was with the trustees and the week before I spoke to the Board of Education. So, basically, I'm just going to kind of regroup. I need to form a nonprofit. I've had people make donations, but I've turned checks back just because being married to a C P A makes it difficult to put everything in your own name. But I have some people from outside the community that are committed to money and so for the next four months, basically, I'm just going to dig in, get the paperwork done for the nonprofit and go back in in February. We had six days and then at the last day, some of you maybe have heard, I'm sure the police chief knew all about it, had some troubles there at the building, but you know what? If you're going to try to work with children, you will have issues and sometimes you can say that's why we have insurance. The other thing is on Thursday, the fifth of December, we will be holding a coffee for the chamber. Is that correct?
Yeah, thanks, Reserve.
So, I would guess like to say we should probably just promote the building as well. You know, we'll promote the program that I started and kind of, you know, have people walk around the building and I'll take care of getting coffee and donuts and whatever else. I'm going to talk my mom into making homemade candy and pie. And we'll go, we'll get away from bikes, donuts. Anybody have any questions?
So, why didn't, it didn't work again? I mean, give me the rundown a little bit.
In order for me to really do this, I need to get all kinds of equipment. I have a lot of my own equipment, but I can't just leave it in there.
What do you mean by equipment?
Sports equipment.
Okay.
Balls. I mean, I don't know if you've ever been in a school district gymnasiums plethora of equipment, but it's, it's, you know, a lot. And I have my own stuff and there's a place to put it there. But the other thing is, I mean, I can do programming, but I can't do supervision and programming. I've collected pool balls, cues, I need to get a bunch of air hockey stuff. I think there's a functional ping pong table there, but I haven't spent a lot of time trying to figure it out. But if I can get ten to twenty-five thousand dollars in my pocket, which I fully plan to do between now and February, it'll be easier for me to get some people to help me. Money does help, but for the most, I mean, I was ready at insurance and we had kids show up every week, began to have kind of a relationship with them, but the second to last week, some of the little rascals decided they'd sneak in the building while I hadn't locked up yet. So, that was the first time. And then the second time, the next week, when I kind of started arguing, they wanted to go in the building. And I said, you know, there isn't anything we can't do outside here. And then when I left, not shortly thereafter, one of them decided to do a little vandalism, which I still would like to deal with because when kids do that, I think it's important that they serve their community service work. And I have actually told the kids that were part of that group that I would gladly participate in that because there's a lot of those things that kind of need to go together and making that a real functional drop-in before and after school or really I said after school facility. And on Thursday morning, I'll be talking to the recommissions. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We talked about the first executive session. How much time do you think we need? Twenty minutes on that first one?
Probably, yeah.
Okay, and who wants, who's going to be in there with us?
Well, I would think you'd want Teresa and probably Amy along with the commission, Larry.
Well, I make a motion, executive session for a period of twenty minutes, discuss with the city attorney, the city legal and financial relationships with the Cali County Humane Society Pursuit to the K S A seventy-five days, four, three, one, nine, possibly be two, with attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged to the attorney-client relationship. The open beam will resume city commission chambers at what time? Twenty minutes?
Twenty seconds.
Second. It's been moved second. Voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah, we're at our executive session and we're going to make action.
I'd like to make a resolution authorizing the city of our Kansas City to allocate an additional fund contribution to the Catholic County Humane Society to cover financial shortfalls for an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, it's been moved second. Any discussion on it?
I think that the public needs to know that we have asked for accountability for these funds and they have agreed to meet with us at least every quarter. I think that's important.
Yeah, monthly budget, each month, the budget that goes back to Randy and he'll give to, let us look at it, so.
And I will say also that after meeting with Amy, I think that the, the Humane Society has put some things into place that are going to help cut costs as well and possibly bring in some money. So, I'm very confident in the direction we're going.
Okay, I would assume this will be a voice vote since we took out the consent agenda. Yeah, I, I'll, so we got a motion, second again. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, now we got a second executive session. Do we want this for ten minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, recessed executive session for a period of ten minutes to discuss matters involving a not elected city employee pursuit, pursuit to K S A seventy-five days, four, three, one, nine, possibly one, which justifies discussion of personal matters of not elected personnel as a private, private matters. The name will resume the city commission at what?
Six thirty-nine.
Six thirty-nine.
This conference will now be recorded.
When we're at our executive session, I make a motion, we adjourn. Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.